With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All set?
Yeah.
Okay. This meeting is being livestreamed by Chelmsford Telemedia and posted to CPS website for interested community members to access and watch. In-person public participation will be taking place tonight in accordance with the Chelmsford School Committee Public Participation Policy. Anyone speaking tonight during the public input portion of this meeting has notified the superintendent's office of their desire to speak and been provided with these guidelines. Ponder requests, written comments received no later than 11:00 PM on the day of this meeting will also be read and made part of the record of the meeting during the second public comment session. Welcome to this meeting of the Chelmsford School Committee. Our first order for business is to approve the minutes from our meeting on March 25th.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of March 25th, 2025.
I'll second.
Which of you did it?
I'll.
Diana. All right, any corrections on the minutes? All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Was zero. All right, next up, our student representative.
Hi, everyone. So, I think it was two weeks ago, CHS students had the opportunity to watch Hunter and Cameron Flores' The Sober Truth. This presentation was centered around the dangers of gateway drugs, and it was shown through Cam and Hunter's firsthand experiences they have been through in their lives, and they both were brothers. It was very moving. And then there was another presentation, it was last Tuesday, where students were given another opportunity to listen to Katie Greer as she talked about online health and safety. And I wasn't there for that because last Monday was the seniors' first day of internship. So, those, the seniors that signed up to participate in it started off their internship. And I'm doing mine at a law firm right now, and it's going well. And the Chelmsford High School Model United Nations Club sent 12 delegates to the three-day UMass Lowell Model UN Conference, and they were awarded with top honors by being named the UML MUN Best Delegation of 2025. Then the Chelmsford High School Symphony Band was awarded gold at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association. And then the Middle Eastern Association Club and Muslim Association Club hosted a Henna night on Friday, March 21st, with Henna food, music, and Turkish coffee. It looked like lots of fun. And today was the career breakfast for the juniors at CHS. Students had the opportunity to interact with many different individuals with many different skills on jobs they are interested in. I think that went well, from what I heard.
Great. Lots of good news. Thank you.
Oh, and today is Winter Sports Awards, which Patrick is at right now. So, congrats to all the winter athletes.
Any other good news?
So, we are in the fourth term or third trimester, if you're an elementary school teacher, so that's great news. To the home stress. And we have school vacation week starting next week, don't forget. Actually, it starts this Friday because there's no school on Friday. And Dr. Lang and I were able to stop by that Eid celebration. Was it a week and a half ago? Or last week?
Yeah, last week.
Down at the Chelmsford Community Arts Center. So, it was very nice to be there and be able to spend a little bit of time.
Anybody else have any good news they want to share? Okay. All right, we don't have anybody for public comment, so we'll move on to new business. I'll turn the meeting over to Superintendent Lang.
We will. Thank you. So, for the viewing audience, every time we have an election in town, which is obviously the first meeting Tuesday, the first Tuesday in April, we reorganize the various boards. So, the school committee needs to select a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary to serve for this next coming year. And I usually step in to take the nominations for the chair. And then, once the chair is elected, we'll turn the rest of the meeting over to the chair to conduct, to select a vice chair and a secretary. So, at this point, I would open up nominations if someone would like to nominate someone to serve as the chair of the school committee for the next year.
I nominate Dennis King to continue as the chair.
I second.
Are there any other nominations? All right, with a nomination in a second. Actually, do we do roll call?
I think we do.
I think we do. So, I'll do a roll call. Susan?
Yes.
Diana?
Aye.
Maria?
Yes.
And Dennis?
Sure.
Congratulations. So, Dennis will be the chair, and I will now turn it back over to you.
Now, we'll take, all right, next up, we have vice chair. Any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Maria Santos to continue as vice chair.
Okay. All right, I'll second that. All right. Any other nominations? All right, we will vote. Susan?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye. Maria, congratulations.
Thank you.
Vice chair. All right, and then finally, we need to nominate a secretary. Any nominations? Which one of them wants it? I think Diana wants it.
Diana wants it? Okay. I would like to nominate Diana for the position of secretary, and she's done a very good job.
All right, I will second that. All right, any other nominations? Okay, Susan?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right, so we have the gang back together again. Great. All right, next up, then, we have Chips.
Yeah, we have a couple of presentations tonight, and I very much appreciate Robin and Megan's understanding because we bumped this meeting a week. So, these should be extra good presentations because you've got an extra week to practice. But I'll actually, I'll invite Megan McGurk, who is our preschool coordinator over at Chips, and Robin Adams. I'm not sure if you want to come up together or separately, however you decide to do it, is our coordinator of our community education programs. Okay. So, Megan, we will turn it over to you and hear a little bit about Chips.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm Megan McGurk, I'm the coordinator at Chips. So, just a little bit about Chips at a glance. We have eight classrooms in our program. Five of them are inclusive. They're half-day sessions, so that's 10 sessions of inclusive preschool. Two of them are intensive classrooms. They have ABA-based instruction for children whose disabilities require that. They're substantially separate classrooms. And then, we have one that's kind of a blend of inclusive and intensive, where children spend part of the day in an inclusive environment and then are able to extend some or all of their days to receive specialized instruction in a small group with an ABA base. We have over 190 students enrolled right now. Most students attend two, three, or four half-days per week, depending on, for our Gen Pop students, what their families select. And for our students on IEPs, it's determined by their IEP team based on kind of their level of need and what services they need to receive. So, our five inclusive classrooms are a mix of typically developing students and students who have identified disabilities. We have communication and motor support embedded into all of our classrooms. Our speech therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists spend time in all of the classrooms every week. They're half-day sessions, so they're two and a half hours. And there's two, three, and four-day options that families can choose from. Our intensive classrooms are substantially separate. They're for students who require a higher level of support. These are students who have identified disabilities. Again, we build the communication and motor support into the program. The therapists deliver most of the services in those classrooms rather than taking the children out. And then, there are half-day and extended-day options depending on the child's level of need and the determination that their IEP team makes for them. And then, our inclusive-intensive classroom, this provides an opportunity for our students to have time and inclusion with additional support for students who require it. Again, we embed that motor and communication support right in throughout the day so that there's carryover. Part of this, every student's day is an inclusive classroom, an inclusive environment, and part is substantially separate. So, some children will come, say, four inclusive days a week and extend two days to have some specialized instruction in a small group. For some kids, it's more like four and four. It really depends on the IEP team's decision based on level of need. So, our related services and supports, as I mentioned, they're provided to students on IEPs as determined by the IEP team. We deliver the services in the classroom whenever possible, and our related service providers consult regularly with the classroom teachers to ensure carryover of skills. A great thing about having the related service providers in our program is that all of our students benefit from it, whether they, whether they're getting services on an IEP or they're just there as a Gen Pop student, they're getting that extra communication support, that extra motor support, which is a really nice benefit to our program. Our curriculum is language-rich, sensory-friendly environment. We have developmentally appropriate curriculum that's aligned with the district's elementary curriculum. We use foundations in the classroom as appropriate, depending on the age of the students. For a lot of them, it's just exposure to the language and the method. But some of our students who are moving on to kindergarten are really ready for more of that instruction. We use Fountas and Penel classrooms. We have a lot of that really nice literature and the same program that's then carried over when they go to kindergarten. And we have a standards-based report card for both our three- and four-year-olds based on the Massachusetts Curriculum Framework Standards for Preschool. And these are just some pictures because they're so much fun. So, this is our Space Week. It's one of our themed hallways. We do a few themed hallways throughout the year. Space Week is one of them. One of our teachers, Lauren Nicolosi, has really taken the lead on this, and our Ocean Hallway, which you'll see in a minute. So, all of the classrooms have time in the space hallway. There's a lot of activities set up that are sensory-friendly and give the students a really fun chance to learn about outer space. We also have an Under the Sea Week. This is Under the Sea. Again, a themed hallway that everyone participates in. All of the teachers kind of decorate their bulletin boards and base their classroom instruction around kind of ocean and sea creatures for those couple of weeks, and the hallway is decorated. Kids get to swim in the ocean, do some sensory and motor activities out there. And I thought I had added a Winter Wonderland slide, but I might have sent you not the updated version, Dr. Lang. I apologize if that's, yes, I didn't. We also have, I'm going to go back for a minute. We also have a Winter Wonderland hallway, not pictured.
We got to see that picture in our packet.
Okay. So, maybe I sent you two versions. Okay. But Winter Wonderland is actually a themed hallway that our PTO does. So, we have PTO volunteers come in, decorate the hallway, make it a Winter Wonderland. So, school committee members, you can see that in your packet. And they started doing that a couple of years ago because their children enjoyed Space Week and Under the Sea so much, they wanted to add another themed hallway without putting more extra work on the staff, and it's been really great. And then, we have Touch a Truck, which is so much fun. The PTO also organizes this enrichment where we have lots of trucks from, you know, DPW Fire Department, Police Department. Officer Ozzy joins us, and the kids get to climb in them, touch them, pretend to drive them. It's so much fun. Last year, it rained. We have it at the end of the year. So, as you can see, it was a rainy day, but that didn't stop anyone. We still had a great time. The kids loved it, and it's just a lot of fun. And then, we have started something new this year, partway through the year, called Book of the Month to kind of build on the classrooms doing more kind of common activities. The PTO has also helped us out with this by getting, by getting some banners for the hallway. These are the books that we have done so far. And one of the best parts of Book of the Month is that I get to go in and read the Book of the Month to all of the classrooms, which is so much fun to go in and see all the kids. Now, every time I walk in, they're like, "Do you have a story for us?" So, that's been a lot of fun and something we hope to continue and expand on next year. And I think that's the end. Yes.
Any questions for Megan?
That 190 enrollment, is that like something, it's growing or how is compared to last year?
So, compared to, I actually looked back at my presentation from last year. It's a slightly smaller enrollment last year. We sent quite a few kids to kindergarten last year, but it, since I've been the coordinator, it definitely has expanded. We've kind of reorganized a little so that we're able to accommodate more children, both typically developing students and to accommodate more children on IEPs. So, it definitely has grown. We're very fortunate that we're able to fill all our Gen Pop spots most years, or we have very few openings, so it's very popular. And, you know, we have, I think, a really good reputation in town, and people always like to sign up for us.
You do. It has a very nice reputation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Not a question, but just a comment, just that people know. So, I'm the liaison to the PTO, and I'll report on that later during the liaison part. But I just want to let people know that I've really observed what a great job you do kind of pairing what your staff does and what your parents do and all the parent volunteer things, and you managed to merge those really, really well to get great parent participation and involvement in it.
Thank you.
I've really seen some nice things.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. I think, I would like to say our PTO is small but mighty. They do, they really, they're a small group, but they do a lot for us. They organize a lot of things, and they partner really well with our staff. We're very fortunate.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, Robin Adams, who's our Director of Community Education.
Hello. Thank you.
Welcome to you tonight.
Thank you for having us. So, I'm going to talk about a quick overview about Community Ed. You know, Megan and I were laughing that people always confuse who's Chips, who's Community Ed, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that and focus on the preschool. But community education does a lot of different programs in town. So, we offer Early Childhood, which is the preschool at the high school and at the Westlands that we share with Megan. We have Extended Day. We have Adult Education, summer programs, trips and enrichment. So, we kind of educate everybody in the town. So, for our evening classes, that falls under Adult Ed, but we also have children's courses, so I just highlighted a few of them. We have adult art, crafts, cooking. We do trips, which just came through a new company this year that were offering some new trips for a lot of our seniors in the community like to go on those. Technology classes from basic to advanced technology lessons. Online learning, languages. We have, one of the big hits has been sign language. We have some really popular students who've been in it on Level Three and Four now. They go every year, they meet outside of the class, and they become their own community. Finance and estate planning, health and wellness. And then, for our children, a lot of the same things but geared down for our children. So, fitness, cooking, yoga, education, music lessons. We try and really offer something for all interests of all ages for our evening classes. Adult education has a huge increase on fitness classes this year. We find everything we offer is getting gobbled up by the community. So, we do Pound, which is a fitness class where there's weighted drumsticks that you drum and do things like that on a mat. Zumba, zumba toning. We have strength training, ballroom dancing, line dancing, Pilates. That's just a few of them, but really, if you're looking for anything fitness, we're your place. We often do it the same night that we're doing the cooking classes, so it's a little challenging if you're in the gym and you come out and you smell the cooking class, which is what happens a lot. Extended Day is a huge part of our program, a part of what community education is. We're at many of the schools. And these are just a few of the quick pictures. So, Extended Day really covers all the elementary schools and then Parker Middle School. And we have crafts. We have special guests come in. We have yoga. We have the bookmobile come in. We want to really offer as much activities for those children because a lot of our students come before school, go to school all day, come to after-school till six. So, we want to make sure that they're getting all the experiences, that they're doing some fun gym games, that they're playing with their friends, that they're having organized activity and non-organized activity, similar that you could if you were in your own neighborhood, if you were playing, you know, back when we were young and play outside. We really try and model our programs to give the kids the choices of what they really want to do. Some of our sites, and this goes to the supervisors of the sites and the staff, have done a bunch of projects this year, giving back. So, they've done cards and gift bags to the senior center, and the Meals on Wheels that they do are the delivery meal system. On the right is a card for Junie that, you know, passed away from center school. They did the scarecrow contest, and all the kids did their thumbprints and made a ladybug in honor of their classmate that passed away. So, really, I just wanted to put that on to honor the staff and the supervisors because these are the things that they do on their own. They go above and beyond what I ever ask of them, and it blows me away when I get sent a picture or a card of what they're doing. It's pretty special. For our pre-teens and teens at Extended Day, we have it at Parker Middle School. It's been really nice for us since we've, you know, reorganized the middle schools because all the fifth and sixth graders are together, so they're not bussing over from McCarthy, which makes drop-off easier for us. Our, you know, attendance for the kids that, if they were clubs at McCarthy before and came later, it was a little more challenging. So, they're all at Parker. They come down. We do a lot less structured activity because they are older. So, you know, this day, they were doing old-fashioned board games that one of the staff brought in, teaching them how to play Risk and Battleship, some games that they haven't really played for a while. And we let them have a lot of time to socialize with each other and go outside and do the Gaga Ball pit. Again, letting them grow up and letting them, you know, have more ownership of what they're doing with their time after school. We do yoga as well there. So, back to the preschool and the cute, the cutest kids in the community, our little students in the town. So, we have children ages 18 months to five. We have students at the Westland School as well as the site that's at the high school, Alliance Pride North. We use the same curriculum as the Chelmsford Public Schools for enrichment activities. That's one quick picture of the fire department coming in. We have a STEM classroom where we have a STEM educator who's part of my staff, and she'll do hands-on lessons throughout the week for each class. They go and visit and use the materials in there. So, these were some fun ones, and just, I love watching their faces, you know? This is the age where they don't even know how much they're learning, but, you know, they just see a pumpkin throwing up green goo, but they're learning about, you know, chemicals and reactions and mixing colors and some fantastic things in that classroom. This one I want to bring to light because, again, toddlers, I think a lot of people say, "Oh, it's daycare, they just play." This was a theme that the teachers did, again, on their own, beyond anything I've asked. That's an ice auger where they're going ice fishing, the girl on the left. They're fishing, you know, with their fish they caught and cooking in the frying pan in the middle, and then on the right, they're catching the fish. These children are two years old, and they are learning so much because the teachers just love them. They love what they do. They love being educators and, you know, I, you know, whatever I hear, "You guys are babysitting," or "It's daycare," I get frustrated because I'm like, "There's so much more." You know, we really say we're a school for young children, and we start at our, you know, youngest toddler room, and this was just such a prime example of what all the classrooms are doing. But the ice auger blew me away. I'm like, "Who thought of that?" Like, that was pretty clever. This was a preschool classroom, again, learning through fun, gingerbread theme, where they're doing numbers in their gingerbread house, and the sensory in the dramatic play areas, doing counting, just having a great time and getting exposed to so many different things. The goats, how can you not love the goats? So, we had the goats come visit us. They're going to Alliance Pride North in the spring just for an enrichment. And then, on the left, we have our yoga. That's our Toddler One class. So, they are actually in yoga poses. They may just look like they're bending, but that is yoga. And on the right, we had our puppets. A puppeteer come in, and they got to use the puppets for the last 15 minutes, which was the highlight of the whole, the whole presentation for them. School-age options, we talked a little bit about before and after-school. We have vacation weeks. We have Summer Fest and Summer Quest. I always feel a little guilty because when we come to this presentation, most are filled. So, Summer Fest and Quest are both filled for the summer. So, if you're interested for next year, we book early. But we'll be opening for before and after-school care in, I believe, June this year. So, for people who are watching the community, that also fills up quickly. So, some of our highlights for the year, we increased adult education. Our cafeteria was repainted and is beautiful. We have brand-new tables, which looks really nice. Our program's filled up within minutes. Again, it's a great thing for me. It's challenging for the community, but we really work hard to keep our prices really affordable. So, for the quality we offer, our programs fill within minutes. It's an online system, and they just, they book. We have been cooking hot lunches again back since our kitchen was redone, so our students have loved that. We were able to work with Nancy and adapt our food so it's more preschool-friendly that, you know, we're doing some unique food items there. She's helped guide us. We're doing auto pay, which is going to be huge for families who come to it. Our software wasn't capable of doing that before, so parents had to each month go in and click in, and we've worked with our software company to make it that it can be auto pay, which will be very nice. And then, the yoga, and we have a new tennis pro, which we were looking for, so that has been secured, and he'll be starting tennis lessons this summer and hopefully through the fall. And that is it. So, and how cute is he? I had to put him somewhere in the slideshow.
Any questions or? Good, Diana.
I'm always very impressed by the breadth of everything that's offered, and my family has directly benefited from many of these things, so thank you. I did have a couple of questions that come up frequently when I hear from parents. So, one of them was always going to be, "When is booking for Extended Day next year?" But I also specifically hear a lot of concerns about the process for booking, and several people have asked me if there is a reason why there isn't kind of a first round of it for returners to, they basically secure the same spots for the following year before there's an open call and a system that can sometimes mean families get one day but not another and things like that for the Extended Day programming.
We always try and find a way to make it equitable for everybody. I don't know. I, I'm always open to suggestions, and we've talked about it because I feel, no matter what we do, people feel like they can't get in, and that's one of the hard things. If, if we did that and, say, a family member was sick last year and didn't get booked, and then they never get the chance because we give it to the continuing people, I don't know if that's the most equitable way either. It's, it's hard. We've talked about doing a lottery, and I kind of go back and forth about that because I don't know. I don't know a solution. I'm open to feedback truly from the group because I would like to make it that as many people are as happy as possible, but there's no real win when we're just, we're filling so quickly.
What's the normal enrollment then? You say you fill, was that 100 students or?
So, Extended Day is 500 students, and we fill that. Extended Day usually takes a day to fill, but Summer Fest, where we had 130 students a day, filled within 15 minutes. Alliance Pride fills within seven minutes typically. They, people will take the day off of work. They have their husband and wife on two different computers. I mean, it's, it's a competitive.
Getting Taylor Swift tickets.
Yeah, it is. It's competitive. And, and I will say the one thing that's difficult is siblings. Our software does not have the capability of putting all siblings in together, and that, I think, is one of the biggest things that I'll say. We still struggle with how to get them all in. So, if a family's there and it's one person and gets, puts their son in and has a daughter, by the time they go to put the daughter in, that, that might be filled because somebody else down the street is putting their child in. So, that is something that we struggle with. So, we do try and help those families with the waitlist when the waitlist opens up, if families drop getting siblings in. But yeah, it's, it's a challenge because I would love to take more kids. It's.
Yeah, and then I would say the, the two things I hear most frequently, and I have personally experienced, has been the difficulty when somebody might get like one of the days they've asked for and none of the other days, and that feeling of like, "I don't want to lose this one day, but I know I need five days," and then I'm holding up a spot that somebody else might need, and so those sorts of things. And I don't know if there's a way to set up the system so that it sort of does all or nothing if that's what parents opt for. I don't know if that's an option, but that might free up some of that confusion. Because there would be some parents who would say, "I'll take any day I get," and other parents who would check the box of, "I want every day," or "This isn't going to work for my family," and I don't know. The other thing I've heard is consistently around the struggle with families having to register in the middle of the workday or what for many, I know people work different hours, but what for many people. I personally was literally like in the middle of a meeting that I was facilitating and having to like click the box to register. So, I don't know if there is a way to make it over a period of time or to have half and half with two different, you know, half of the openings for a certain time and half of the openings for another. I don't know what the right answer is, but if there's any way it can be made to be a little bit more accessible to families who work during traditional daytime hours, that would be my one suggestion.
Yeah. To, to respond to that, the reason we do it, when we do it, we used to do it at seven in the morning. So parents could do it before they got to work. I think we even started six. Our software company is not open then. They're across the country. So when we did have a technical issue, we had no support. So we, this was like four years ago. I probably talked about one of these meetings because it was, it was challenging. We had to shut down the system. It actually blocked their software through the whole country because we had such an input of people. Yeah. I mean, it was a big thing. Um, so we have to do it in a time where they're open and we're open. So if parents are having struggles, um, they can call us and that leaves them in the middle of the day. I don't, I don't have a great solution for that. I agree because it's hard. And like I said, parents will tell me they're like, I took the day off or I'm going in late. I re-sdid my schedule, which is not what we want. Online was supposed to be easier. We used to do paper forms and parents would line up outside the door. It was open at nine. We would take forms at nine and 90% of the wives sent their husbands at five in the morning or four in the morning. They all lined up around Comet when I first started and they would be outside the building. So I feel like we've improved, but, um, it's still not perfect. And there's just such a demand that, um, we always try and make it better. We're trying every year. So I appreciate.
To be clear, I know it's in demand because it's a great program, right? But I, um, I do, I mean, I personally last year experienced for the first time, my child who I desperately needed in one day, not getting into the day that I needed him. And eventually he did get off the waitlist. So I was, I was glad that a few weeks later that was resolved. But it was my first time experiencing that. And it gave me an empathy for some of the families who really did have to patch together care sometimes until October, when a spot might open up. And so I, I would love, I don't know. I don't know what the right solution is, but I would definitely, um, love if there was just some exploration of what, whatever options might be to make it easier for families. Since the people who use the extended day program are inevitably families who need the care during the, the workday. So that usually means they're working.
Always. Absolutely. And we're working with our software company. They are the most popular company. We've researched all different ones. But they're a growing company and I think we use our software in a more advanced way than a lot of other districts do because a lot of districts only allow five days, three days or two days, you know, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And by us having the flexibility, it, the software isn't designed for that. So we've been working with them a lot and they are improving. And one of the things we did talk about was increasing the capability. So we don't have as many people on the waitlist. Cause quickly to expand on that, the way the software works and the most they can do is if our maximum we can take on Fridays for 40 kids, because we have four staff, we have to cap all five days of 40 initially. And then the kids on Monday, even if we have seven staff have to go on the waitlist, we have to move them off the waitlist. So it's, it's not ideal for us. It's not ideal for parents. We are actively working with trying to do it a different way this year. But every year we get a little growth from the company and they improve their, their system that makes it better for us. But, so I appreciate the feedback, but we are trying.
Yeah, no, I, I recognize that. It's not really a critique. It's more just like thinking creatively around, but I know our perpetual challenges.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments or?
If you can talk a little bit about how community is funded.
So we're self-funded. We're a self-funded program. So all of our, our programs are self-sustaining with the income that parents pay for it.
It's not grants or anything like that, right? Yeah. That's amazing.
Really just, it's a, it's one of our revolving funds. And they take in obviously different amounts of revenue for the different programs. But they're able to offset the salaries and the benefits and any of the costs for like equipment supplies right from the revolving fund.
So it's in order to be able to expand, space limitations and all of these other things is what causes us to not be able to expand.
Yeah. For summer spacing with the air conditioning, um, having a summer program with air conditioning is very beneficial. So we use all the rooms that have air conditioning in our school. And for the school year, it's staffing, getting staffing for before and after school care is challenging. It's a challenging shift from seven to nine or three to six. So as soon as we get staffing, we bring more people off the waitlist and we, we keep bringing them in all year. But that's, that's what stops us from.
Around the air conditioning point, that's a great point. Is if there were more air condition, if there were more air conditioned rooms with the capacity increase or is there a staffing limitation as well for summer?
It's a little bit of both. In the entire school's not air conditioned, Westland's, you know, with the gym is not and the outdoors obviously in the calves. So we have them go to an outdoor spot and then an indoor spot. So there's a balance of both.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your presentation.
Luck with your summer fest and summer quest.
Thank you.
All right, uh, kindergarten.
Yeah. Joanna, do you want to share the reminder about the upcoming kindergarten registration?
Thank you. So we had, um, we're going to have another date, uh, May 7th here from nine to six for our third kindergarten registration day. The other two dates are at the end of January. Families can sign up. It's on an appointment basis. It's about 15 minutes and they can come in, um, and meet with their future school clerk and register their student and just bring everything in, uh, that's required in the packet. And then we'll get a better sense of our complete kindergarten numbers for next school year.
How are the numbers looking from the first school?
Uh, I'd look, uh, pretty steady as other years. One of them's, I think a little bit higher. Yeah. Um, it's, but you, you never know, like, and then hopefully more families will come in May rather than wait till August. And they can come anytime too and meet with Jane or central registrar, but it's just nice to do it. Kind of these, uh, one big day registrations.
Maybe by the second meeting in May, we'll have an idea of where we're at and what that.
Yeah, we can give you like an update and we usually, uh, in June, before we kind of leave for the summer, share like what the numbers are because obviously our kindergartens are based on primarily having four teachers at each grade level. But there's been years where we've had to add a fifth. So we usually do that, obviously as soon as the number's warranted. But, um, after we do this last registration sometime in May, we will look to see if there's any early adjustments that have to be made. So we can bring that to you.
Anything else in kindergarten? All right. Thank you. Right. There you go. The big one.
Yeah, this is always my favorite one. I actually think this should fall under good news. But, you know, we've already passed that part of the agenda. So I'm sure you all remember voting on this current year's calendar back in, um, 2023. But on December 20th, 2023 is when you voted this current year's schedule, um, I'm sorry, um, calendar. So, um, typically what happens, we have to offer 180 school days and schools by regulation have to build in five days for any type of, uh, school closure, whether it's inclement weather, if you're in Chelmsford, sometimes we don't have electricity, all of those good things that happen. And it gets a little tricky about calling the last day of school because if you have not used all of your days, you are still required to use them if something were to happen. So as we all know, it snowed on Saturday. Thank goodness, not on, um, on Friday. But we have only used one non-school day and that was back in February. So we technically have four more days. So tentatively, we can give a last day of school for students and for staff. However, if for some reason we needed to close school, those days would change. And, and it's not until June 1st that we would not have to make up those days. So anything that happens between now and May 31st, we would then have to adjust this calendar. However, we're feeling very confident. It was a beautiful day today, yesterday, um, not so much on Saturday. So if all goes well and we don't have to call any more days, the last day for students would be June 17th. It's a half day for students, full day for our staff. And the last day for our staff would be Wednesday, June 18th, and that is a half day for staff. So cross your fingers. Only go good weather, keep the electricity on, no, you know, windstorms, tornadoes, all of those things out there that could possibly close down a school.
First year in what, three years? We haven't had to add one for Byham.
Yeah, Brian has reversed the curse.
Don't jinx them.
They're in good shape. Reverse the curse a couple of years now running. So we're in good shape with them.
Can I ask a question relatedly? I know we, we've already approved the calendar for next year. It is nowhere to be found on the website and that is the second thing I get a lot of questions about. I cannot find it on the website, put it that way, next year's calendar. I find this year's very easily.
It should be the tab to the right. It, it's may not be intuitive. So when you click on the tab for this current school years, um, because that comes up first, that's, that prompts you first. To the right, there should be a tab.
Yep. Okay. I see it.
Yeah. It just doesn't, the first one jumps out at you.
I think what a lot of people were doing, because I tried doing the same thing they were doing is Googling 25, 26 academic calendar Chelmsford. And it does not come up when you do that. I can see it on the website if you go directly though. Thank you.
I think some, I'm not sure in Dr. Lang's newsletter, but I feel like it might be like way at the, you know, buried at the bottom. Um, and I know that some of the schools try to have a separate tab for it, but I could, you know, let them know to make sure that there's a next year's tab. So there's another way for them to access it instead of trying to find it on the website.
Great.
But the best way to do it is just click to the right.
All right. Any other questions on that? Comments on last day? Cross our fingers?
Cross our fingers.
All right. Okay, uh, budget report.
Joanna has a third quarter financials.
So in the packet is the third quarter financials. So there's a memo. There is the year-to-date budget report. There is a grant and revolving fund summary. And then there's the student activity account balances for the high school and both middle schools. Some of this will be pretty familiar to you because, um, we just had the budget projection, um, discussion and meeting. So not too much has changed since that, which was like a month ago. So this is about our 73 dot eight eight million dollar local operating budget. A few of the variances, um, I'm just going to highlight. Some of the were favorable, um, for the year. Some of the, um, variances are going to look different than the second quarter report because as part of our budget projection, you had approved some budget transfers of these favorable balances to reallocate those funds for the one-time purchases. Classroom teacher category is still favorable by 34,121. And again, just as a reminder, we had transferred some of this money out at the, uh, end of March meeting. So that's been reflected in this third quarter report. The main reason that category is still favorable is, um, the, if a teacher is hired at less than master step three, that's a favorable balance. The same is true with the specialist teachers category. That's still favorable by 144,897 dollars for the same reasons. The other category that's still favorable is our medical and health services. And part of that is because, um, newly hired RN was, um, hired at less than budget. And then the mental health service cost contracted services from Carisolus and Cartwheel was funded from the last year of the S R three grant, which ended in, um, September. One area that's unfavorable right now is our transportation costs. And we've talked about this before. It's unfavorable by 127,689 dollars. Uh, mainly because of additional special ed in district and out of district transportation. And then an area that's tough to forecast is the homeless transportation, um, budget. Our employee separation cost category is favorable by 86,761. And that's for the retirement incentives. So, um, last year we were able to pay the retirement incentive in June, which was fiscal 24 rather than July, which is fiscal 25. So that's why that, um, category has remained favorable. And our out of district tuitions, um, this is, this chart has been updated because we did make the journal entry to transfer some of the actual expenditures over to the circuit breaker fund. And so right now the category is favorable by 1.3 million. And that money's, um, it's favorable because we prepaid tuitions last fiscal 25 tuitions at the end of fiscal 24. So the second chart is probably more helpful. Overall, the tuitions, um, are actually a little higher than when what was budgeted, even when you factor in the prepaid. Overall, um, our tuitions were forecasting to be about 7.2 million this year. And once you do the offset to circuit breaker and the valley collaborative credit and back out the tuition, the prepaid tuitions, um, we're estimating we're going to be favorable by about 1.4 million. And this will likely come in a future meeting to recommend we prepay some fiscal 26 tuitions in fiscal 25.
Now, in the, in the memo, it has a 1.3 favorable and then the chart is 1.4 is just.
I'm holding a placeholder a little bit. Oh, it's, um, because we haven't taken all of the valley collaborative credit yet.
Okay.
In the actuals.
Okay.
When you come in to sign the warrant, you'll see that again. We, at the end of the, um, March reports, we still had about 85,000 to go. And so once you see that go through, it should get a little closer. And then the last chart is, um, just an update on where we're at with school choice revolving fund. We don't use it to fund special ed tuitions this year. It's being used to fund the one-to-one commute, um, computer initiative. And, um, we're expecting that balance to, um, be at about 2.8 million at the end of this fiscal year. Any questions on the local budget? No, thank you. The next page is, um, the grant and revolving funds for the quarter. The very top are the, um, the carryover grants and then the new entitlement grants for fiscal 25. The lower section on page one is some of the private grants and circuit breakers in there. Just the circuit breaker money comes quarterly. And of course, the third quarter funds came like April 2nd. So it's not in this particular quarterly report, but it's on schedule. And then the last page are the revolving funds such as school nutrition, athletics, community ed. And all of those, there are no deficit balances.
Just a question, we, we recently got some money from the builder over at West Campus. What account did that end up going into?
So what were, the, the money was $180,000 came from the developer who's developing 255 Princeton Street. They sent more than 180,000, but the school department's portion per the agreement is 180,000. The town also received funds for transportation remedial, um, things like that. I'm not sure exactly what their number is, but there's two numbers. Uh, after talking to the town accountant, oh, we are putting it in a gift and donation account. It's not on here yet because the money was deposited in the bank April 1st. So that wasn't the March report, but I'm going to add a line under, um, 503 is our regular gift and donations and I'll label it. It's going to have its own account number in, um, the ledger. And we'll just call it, you know, Princeton, um, whatever. So everybody can see that 180,000. And there's no, um, it's not time bound. There's no end date of when you have to spend the funds. Any questions on grants or revolving funds?
I have a question about that last. Is that a one-time payment for that, from that Princeton?
For the school department? Yeah, it's my understanding.
It is. It was part of the, um, when the Tremel Group was going through all the different agreements with the town to secure their property, um, the town was asked to bring forward any kind of extraordinary costs that might come, uh, from that. I know on the school side, we talked a little bit about, we had to do an enrollment projection. There was a cost associated with that. That was going to originally cost somewhere like in the 40 to 60,000 dollar range. And we wanted to make sure any of those immediate costs would be covered. Um, and this is something Maria actually, uh, mentioned at the time too. Once we actually start enrolling kids from the school, there's going to be other costs to us and they could come up mid-year. So even outside of like a regular traditional budget where it can be planned for, what could we do to kind of mitigate some of those expenses? We may have to add a bus. We may have to add, you know, a teacher or something like that. Cause again, we don't know what grade levels the kids will be coming in or what schools they necessarily would be going to. So in the end, uh, the group ended up, um, agreeing to provide the school under kind of the school committee's control, $180,000 that would cover the cost of any of those kind of short-term things. On the town side, there was, there was some type of a traffic study that had to be done. There were other things that, um, that they needed to have covered. So that's why the check was larger. But the school, uh, committee basically has $180,000 at its disposal to use in the future as kids start to go to that property, however we would need it. Um, the, the cost just needs to be somewhat associated with the education of those kids as they come into the system and where they end up going. But that'll be nice. And as Joanna indicated, it'll just sit in one of those kind of special grant accounts. We haven't started enrolling yet, so we don't know exactly when that will happen.
Next school year, I would think.
I wouldn't participate it being sometime in the summer or fall as, um, as they start to lease out those properties. We'll monitor it very closely, but, um, at least we do have that little bit of a, um, you know, kind of an emergency fund to help us, uh, short-term, uh, as things come up.
Do we have any idea of how many units have already been built and how many will come online? And whether they're single bedroom, two bedroom, what they are?
I don't, I don't know like the phasing of what's like available now or even going to be coming up first. In the agreement, I just don't have it off the top of my head. It talked about how many, um, studio, one, two-bedroom units there were. I just don't recall off the top of my head. But, um, I have to say, I think it's going to be opening at about the same time. You know, I don't think this is at this point like two or three years down the line or it's going to be that staggered. I think with probably within, you know, six months or a year's time, the property is going to become, um, available and probably filled. I'll email you if you'd like, um, and just give you like the actual number of units and anticipated, um, when they're going to be coming online. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Yeah. Because they, they probably have, they know when the occupancies are going to be issued.
No, no, I'm sure they do. I just don't remember what it was.
Yeah. Okay.
I can email you.
And if they were to come online, say over the summer, do we have the capacity at say the Harrington would be, elementary kid would go to absorb 10 kids, 15 kids?
Yeah, it all just depends honestly, um, in the end, like they're unlikely to all be like at the same school, at the same grade. So yes, we'd be able to absorb, um, kids here and there. Yeah. I don't think we're going to get to the point where it's going to be, you know, 50 or 75 or 100 kids all coming. or seventy five or a hundred kids all coming, certainly not all coming at the same grade level. Like, we have plenty of capacity at the high school, if they happen to be older kids. You know, our middle schools are going to be a little bit tighter. Our elementary schools are going to be a little bit tighter. A couple of kids here and there per grade level is not going to throw things off. My bigger concern is going to be if we ever saw like a number of kids coming predominantly at the elementary school level, then no, Harrington would have an issue with that. We would have to kind of figure out what to do with that. That's what we'd kind of talk to one point to, that even as they're starting to enroll, we may need to, you know, kind of annex that property and think about having the kids go to a different school. Like South Row has more capacity than Harrington does. We could have a bus pickup, because they're going to have to be bussed anyway based on proximity. We could have a bus pickup and go right down Route three to South Row as opposed to cutting through town to Harrington. So we are kind of doing some scenario planning. It's all just going to matter on kind of where they come from. And again, if it's a handful of kids at a grade level, it's not going to throw us off. But if it ever ended up being, you know, huge numbers, which I truly don't think is going to happen, but if it ever ended up being big numbers, we would have to adjust. But I'll email you the total in the end, number of units, and then also the phased opening and when they anticipate.
Great, thank you.
Just one on revolving turf fields. How are we doing, like?
So there's a couple of people who rented in the fall who still need to pay. And Dan's doing his best to collect, and I'll step in if and when needed. And then he will, we'll just start up for the spring, and then that gets billed in the, I think around June. We try to get it in before the end of the fiscal year if we can, but sometimes it spills over.
So we paid off the notes on those fields, right?
For the school department side.
So now we're just accumulating the fees?
That's right.
To reserve for if we have to redo the turf or?
Right, and we do pay for the, like a maintenance, annual maintenance. We share the cost with the town to do things to maintain the fields, to extend their life.
Okay, what do we think we have left on those lifetime wise?
It's coming up sooner than you would think. So I think it was like two thousand and twelveish when they went in. We were kind of fortunate, we had a couple of down years with COVID, that they didn't have a lot of playtime. But the, from what I understand, the turf at McCarthy is probably need a replacement before the turf in the stadium, largely because this turf in the stadium, although it gets a lot of high school use, it's more protected from kind of community use. If you do walk, drive through town, you see just a lot of people playing on the turf field at McCarthy, so it just, it's taking more of a beating. But we're going to, so I would, to be honest with you, we have it inspected every year. It gets tested every year to make sure that it's, meets all of our insurance requirements, and it still does. But I would think we're probably two or three years out from having to do something at least at McCarthy. And then the high school field would not be that farther along. It is not going to be as big of a project as it was to originally put them in, because all of the site work has been done, all of the drainage is already in ground. You're basically rolling, they call it a carpet, but you're rolling up the carpet and you're putting down a new carpet. So it's not going to be quite as big of a project as it was the first time. We would actually probably look to see if there's any economy or scale of doing them at the same time, because if you have a company out here to actually do all the work that's involved, there may be a little bit of savings there. And if it was going to be a situation where you had to replace one one year and one the next year, you know, it might just not make sense to do that. But it's something that's on our list. It's on the town's capital list, so we have that that we track. But I'm going to say within two or three years, we're probably going to have to move on McCarthy, followed shortly thereafter by the high school. And the originally, they were anticipating like a ten year kind of use, and we're, we're at that, you know, we're actually, we're over that ten years. But we kind of were fortunate that they didn't get heavy use during COVID, so we had a couple of years that were off. Thank you. The maintenance plan, which we do, Joanna mentioned, charge our portion to that fund, certainly helps to keep the playing surfaces, you know, clean and orderly and helps with the compaction of the different material that they use, so that's helping us to extend the life.
Thank you.
And then the last report is the balances of the student activity accounts. So the high school is at two hundred and fifty seven thousand. The McCarthy is at thirty six thousand, and the Parker is at sixty seven thousand. And then you can see all the clubs or teams underneath in the detail on each page.
All right, any questions on the activity accounts? Okay, great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Next report before you this evening, number six, is the personnel report. And this is just some of the detail of the hiring. We're still actually doing a little bit of hiring to replace individuals as they leave. So this is still current year hiring. We had a few paraprofessionals hired at different schools under the new hires, and then we did have a handful of resignations as well, and this is all happening during the current year. We are well underway for the hiring for the fall, so you're going to start to see effective dates of the end of August. Those are going to be all the new staff that are going to be joining us. But this is the detail of transactions, people who were hired and then resigned for the month of March.
I don't know what's going on at some districts that there have been some layoffs and so on. Are you finding it that there's more people out there looking for work or is it a bigger pool?
I have to say, it honestly depends on the job. So what we're seeing is for some of the more general positions, like if we don't have any, we really only had one, elementary school, say like a third or a fourth grade position, we're kind of going back to the, to the pre-COVID days, where you may have, you know, forty to sixty candidates for a job, which is great to be able to pull from, so that's excellent. But when you get into some of the specialty positions, we're still having a hard time getting a good crowd of applicants. So we have, we're having a difficult time. We are with, like, say, some of the specialty, special ed positions, like the language-based position we created at McCarthy, they're only looking at, I think, two or three applicants. So it's really, you got to kind of seize quickly and see if you've got a candidate there to be able to move on. You know, the world language positions, whether they're French or Spanish, those are still very hard to, to fill. Again, the general special ed positions, we're getting a decent pool of candidates for, but some of the specialty ones, like we have a Strive position at South Row. So that's a little bit harder to, to fill. So I'm not overly surprised. I mean, the pool is definitely better than it was two years ago, but for those specialty jobs, they're still, you know, we have, we have to make sure we go into the job fairs. We have to make sure that we're reaching out to the colleges to get the kids as they're coming out of their programs to really see us as a venue to, to come work in. So that work is happening.
Okay.
We're certainly ahead of the curve when it comes to the other Merrimack Valley communities in the hiring. So I think like logistically in our area, we're doing well. And as you mentioned, you know, we are seeing a good number of applicants from the districts who are laying off staff. So, you know, most notably around us recently is Lake North Andover. We had a, a number of applicants come from North Andover. So they tend to be applicants who probably have least seniority in their districts, so they're the first to be laid off. But oftentimes, they're an attractive pool because they're, they're younger, they're coming out of colleges, they're, you know, recently trained, and they have a little bit of classroom experience as well. So not necessarily a bad story for us, a bad story for the other districts who can't maintain them. But all in all, I'm fairly happy with where we are.
That's great.
All right, any other questions on personnel? All right, moving along.
Moving on. Next before you, I put together a draft meeting schedule for the coming school year, which will start, well, technically the fiscal year, July first, right through the following June thirtieth. So on the schedule, just make a couple of notes for you. Consistently the last few years, and I did this in this schedule as well, the February and April school vacation weeks would normally fall on the second, I'm sorry, the third Monday of the month, so we bumped those to the fourth. I'm sorry, I didn't say Monday, Tuesday, Monday of the month. I know, you know what I mean. So, and that's worked out well for the budget hearing in February, because we usually do the recommended, recommended budget the first meeting, and then you have plenty of time to review it, and we come back to that meeting. April as well would be fine. The, in April, on the first, we have to move, because we have the election that day, to the second Tuesday, which is fine. And that actually helps us spread out the month of April, having it be the second and the fourth after the break. November is a tough one for us next year. So what I actually recommended you do in November is just schedule for the time being one meeting, and if we ever needed to add a meeting for any kind of business purpose, we could. But the first Tuesday in November is Election Day, so we can't meet that day. The second Tuesday in November is Veterans Day, so that's a holiday, and we can't meet on the holiday. And then we'd obviously be meeting the third, but the fourth one would be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and that's already just a short week. So for scheduling purposes, and I even looked at what we normally have on the agenda those days, unless we had something urgent, like business wise, which we could always just schedule a special meeting, I think we'd be fine getting through November with just the, the one meeting date scheduled. And those are really the only, the only changes we had to the, to the calendar if you had to consider.
Can I ask, so in general, I think, I don't have any complaints about the schedule. I'm curious if there's logic for why in March, we didn't move the meetings each to be one week later, because that would enable us to have more even spacing. So if you look at like March's meeting right now, so February twenty fourth, March third is the immediate week following. And if we moved that instead to be March tenth, and then the second meeting to be March twenty fourth, March thirty first is a Tuesday, so we would skip that week, and that would put us at an even cadence to then do April seventh. Is there, I'm just curious if there's a benefit to spacing them like that so that we're not having a couple of back to back ones, but instead really it's every other week?
Right.
I have one concern about that, though. For people who like to keep track of and watch school committee, if almost always it's the first and the third, we're only disrupting it a few times. The more we add to disrupt that, the more we're confusing people who are, might be viewers. And there are people who are regular viewers.
There are a lot of people that actually watch. It's really twofold. One was that, just to kind of keep the first and third. The other thing was, when we do move, people are kind of used to us moving around the vacation weeks, that makes sense. But when we move on the other ones, it does affect the other boards that meet on those days, because there is a viewing audience at home that watches another particular meeting, say, at this time, so we just try not to conflict. And then the only other thing I would say about the March, it just happens to be the five Tuesdays this year, so that that kind of worked out. But if we ever weren't done the budget deliberations at the last meeting in February, usually we try to, we always kind of have a rain date or a snow date to come in that first meeting in March to do it. It just then would kind of delay by another week, maybe going to FinCom and getting ready for the Springtown meeting. So that's why we just typically have kept the, the first meeting in, in March.
Okay, I was just making sure there would be no problem with us going, for example, March seventeenth to April seventh, which is a three week gap. Are there usually issues if there's a three week gap between meetings? I guess there's been a couple.
Well, it happens. It happens like twice a year because of the way the five Tuesdays fall. But no, I mean, if we haven't really had to have a business meeting, too, we certainly could just schedule another meeting, but this just keeps more of the traditional schedule going, largely for the, for the viewing audience and things like that.
That's fine with me. It was a point of curiosity. I'm not particularly concerned.
What's that? What's, what election's April seventh?
Yeah, do you have a school committee scheduled?
No.
You can have a school committee on the same day as Election Day.
I thought we said the first was the Election Day, when we talked.
That's a Wednesday. Isn't the Election Day, it was on the Tuesday?
Okay, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we don't have, if we're going to change it, we're going to change it.
Which day might conflict with an election?
April seventh, if that's an election, it's the first Tuesday of the month.
So it is the first Tuesday?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought there was some note about that in here.
Yeah, I remember we talked about that.
I'm in twenty twenty six, right?
Yeah.
It's going to be April seventh.
I've also moved the first meeting in April to the second Tuesday, so, okay.
Yeah, that's right, though. April seventh is the first Tuesday.
Okay, so.
Oh, it is.
So we'd have to go the second and the fourth? Which is fine, right?
Sorry.
I may have actually just said it in my memo, but not reflected it on the, the chart.
That's what happened. You put it in the memo, but the date, it's in the list.
Should be the fourteenth to twenty eighth.
You'd have to do fourteen twenty, because twenty first is the school vacation.
Right.
I already did that.
So instead of April seventh, it would be April fourteenth.
It'd be April fourteenth.
Yeah, that's fine.
But there has to be one. So that must have been my error, because I made the, I made the note of it in the memo pot, but I didn't carry it down below. So if you'd entertain just accepting it with the, the edit of moving the April seventh to April fourteenth, I would adjust the schedule before we post it.
That sounds fine to me.
Any other thoughts? You can see we're just doing one July as usual, which is good.
Yeah, we only do one in July, and then, again, I think there's five Tuesdays this coming July. Yes, there are. So the recommendation was to go on the, actually on the twenty second, which is the fourth one. Two reasons on that one. We actually have our superintendent conference the week of the fourteenth, so it'll be difficult for, for us to have a meeting on the fifteenth. It also gives us an extra week to just work on our end of the year closeout of accounts and reporting and things like that. And it still gives us an extra week in between getting that meeting on the fifth going. So that was the recommendation for the, for the twenty second.
Whatever makes Joanna's job easier, that's what I'll be.
Yeah, I'll just make sure I bring as much as I can preliminary in June, so that the July will just hopefully be just a readout.
Okay, great. All right, any other thoughts on the calendar? Okay, I'll take a motion with the.
I move that we accept the school committee calendar for the twenty, twenty five, twenty six school year for the school committee meetings as amended.
I'll second.
Great. Any other thoughts or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll get that amended. I'll get it posted up to the site, and I'll put that in the Dropbox, just so you have it for your own scheduling.
All right, the other thing we put on there is our current liaison assignments to see if anybody wants any changes or are they happy with what they have? Any thoughts, questions?
I'm personally happy with my liaison assignments, but I can be flexible if somebody would like to make a change.
Any other? Well, hold off to vote on it, because John's not here, but I just want to, you know, might as well put it out here. If, if you look at it, want to look at it a little closer, and then there's something that pops out, and you're like, you know, I'd really like to, to do that, then let me know, and we can, can discuss at the next meeting. All right, so this is what we currently have, but, you know, if you're looking and say, you know, I'd really like to be on the, I don't know, the finance committee thing or whatever, you know, whatever you think.
You're okay with your assignments?
I will, I'm very flexible. Well, not really physically, but I'm flexible with this. Can't touch my toes, but I can, I can switch meetings. But yeah, no, just, you know, just if you want to email me.
Okay, I'm going to talk to John about the Chelmsford High School PTO.
Yeah, 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 so we'll wait till John gets here to make a vote, so, but this is what we have currently. All right, Valley Collaborative, I believe, is next.
Yeah, so we have the report that Dr. Chris Scott shared with us on the Valley Collaborative Business. This is their third quarter report. It just contains their spring newsletter, their third quarter financial memo, and then their treasurer's report from March twenty twenty four. And there's a little bit of an update with regard to fiscal twenty six budget and tuition rates. This is a packet that they send us quarterly that as a member district, we're required to put on one of our school committee agendas and then have the school committee vote to acknowledge receipt of the report.
Any questions or thoughts on the Valley Collaborative?
So what happens, or when are we notified of the amount, and what happens with the reimbursement to the districts for the over tuition?
So a couple of different things on that. We actually, we had a board meeting last Thursday, and we approved a preliminary million dollars, like a minimum million dollars going back to districts. So there was an actual allocation of that, like Chelmsford's portion. Off the top of my head, I want to say it was about one hundred and eighty thousand dollars was that million. And then we're not going to know the final number until the fall, because June thirtieth has to close. They've got to go through their audit to try to figure out exactly how much the excess revenue that they have is. And then the board has to vote. We usually do that, I want to say, in October. So we would vote to accept the audits, we would vote to accept the final allocation of funds, and anything above that million would get voted back to the districts, and then we would find out. So for right now, I want to say it's ballpark, kind of guaranteed one eighty. We had budgeted three hundred, and we'll kind of figure out how close we're going to be to that, again, like probably in October. And we had done three hundred last year. Joanna, do you know the, I know you had it in your report, but I just don't have it in front of me. What was the actual number of the credit fiscal?
Two nine four.
Okay, so I mean, it came in within ten thousand dollars of that amount, but that will get certified sometime in the ball.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I just wanted to say congratulations, I saw the little thing in the newsletter about the six audits, they're all exemplary on all those audits.
Yeah, they really did.
Those are, those are, you know, I know from having some little experience over there that. that, you know, that's a nervous time for them with having the audits, people come in and check things. So to get six audits like that, that's pretty, pretty impressive.
Yeah, and I mean, it certainly, there's always like a financial component to them, but there's even a programmatic component, which is very strenuous to have to go through when you're doing licensing and things like that with the state. So, no, they've, they've really done a very nice job at at Valley.
I've heard a couple of people who have family members in the Valley Collaborative, and they can only say great things about it. So I've never heard a bad comment on it, although I've been on the school committee.
No, I.
We have a number of our students that attend various programs that they offer that are excellent. There's adult programming as well. And really, just excellent, excellent staff, excellent students and young adults in the programs. It's, it's very well-run.
Seems to be very.
We're fortunate, because that is one of the collaboratives in the state that's actually fiscally solvent, you know? There are a lot of collaboratives that are really struggling financially, so not only do you have a school budget that might be tight, but we're really responsible for making sure the collaborative stays financially intact as well. So that if a collaborative doesn't, districts sometimes have to actually vote to expend money at the collaboratives. So that's like an extra, you know, kind of financial burden on districts, but we haven't had to worry about that. Ironically, they've been doing so well, they've been giving money back to us.
Amazing.
So that's good.
Do we have to vote to accept this as a report?
Yeah, you need to at least vote to accept, you vote to accept that you've received the report. You're not technically voting to authorize or anything, you're voting to have received the report.
Okay. I move that we accept the quarterly reports on the collaborative business for FY '25 third quarter, as presented.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Lastly, field trips.
Yeah, we have a number of field trips. You can either take them individually or collectively. I'll run through them real quick for you. This is, the first one is McCarthy Middle School, the eighth-grade class trip to Mel's Funway in Litchfield, New Hampshire. Again, as we're going through these, these happen to just be day trips, but they are out of state. So that's why you're approving them. And then we have the number of field trips that are all the community ed field trips. So the first one is Summer Fest on July 31st, going to Canterbury Lake in Salem, New Hampshire. And then the next batch are all Summer Quests. This is the one that's more field trip-driven. So we have a trip to Canterbury Lake on July 10, 24, and August 6th. Going to Stevens Park and Chunky Cinema in Manchester on July 14th. Going to Seven Rivers Paddling on July 16th. That's in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. The Oceanarium on July 22nd in Hampton, New Hampshire. And then back to Mel's Funway on July 23rd, which is in Litchfield, New Hampshire.
All right, why don't we do the McCarthy one separate, and then we'll do all the community ed ones?
Okay. I make, I move that we approve the field trip, McCarthy Middle School, eighth-grade students, June 12, 2025, Mel's Funway in Litchfield, New Hampshire.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I think we could just group all the community ed.
Yes, I move that we approve the field trips numbered through to seven on the approval of field trips request form for community education program for July 31st, all the way through, I don't know what it is, July. I think that's the last date.
As presented.
In July and August of 2025.
Right. Okay, so all those in, oh, we need a second, I'm sorry.
I will second.
Okay. All those in favor of community ed program field trips?
Aye.
Was zero.
New Hampshire's getting a lot of business, almost.
All the fun stuff's up there, I guess.
It is a lot of fun stuff.
All right.
Question related to field trips, just a very quick one. Is the, is there still a plan for the eighth graders to go to Quebec?
That was approved.
Yes, they did.
I remember seeing this.
Actually, they did put, it was a few meetings ago.
No, I know we voted on it. I didn't know if plans had shifted.
I have not heard anything about the plans shifting. I'm assuming that they're.
I have heard some districts have not been able to continue with plans to go to Canada, so I was just curious.
Oh, not because of the own district, but because of the.
Because of just political situation at the border and things like that.
I haven't heard of anything.
Okay.
I haven't heard from the coordinator. I think she would have gotten in touch with me.
Okay.
I'll double-check, though. If I find something, I'll let you know.
That's a good question, huh?
Yeah, I didn't even think of that.
Yeah, no.
I mean, our students are leaving for Costa Rica this week, too.
I think they'll probably just plan to spend longer at the border than they maybe otherwise would have.
All right, anything else on field trips? All right, any liaison reports?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a few. First, I've been liaison to the town strategic plan steering committee. We had our final meeting tonight, and the strategic plan is complete. It was presented to the select board last night. We just reviewed it and made some edits at our final meeting today, and it will be briefly presented at town meeting at the end of the month. And then it will be available on the town website, and our town manager and his staff and departments will begin the implementation phase. So you can be looking for seeing that, as I said, at town meeting and on the town website.
So for, it says a committee. That means we're going to have a meeting with a select board this coming year? Is that what it is?
So there is a objective that the town government and the school department will collaborate more, and that will be done by having a semi-annual, meaning twice-a-year meetings with the superintendent and the school committee, meeting with the town manager and the select board to just review progress toward each other's strategic plans and see if there's any way to make recommendations or help each other out for the betterment of the town as a whole. That's the proposal. I do not know. I would imagine the town manager and the superintendent will communicate when that will happen. This doesn't, won't actually be implemented until sometime in 2026. Yeah.
Okay.
The plan itself, because they still have to go through the the implementation process with the town manager. But the steering committee to produce the plan has completed its job.
Well, thank you for serving on that. I know that was a lot of work.
Thank you.
It was interesting. I was good to hear viewpoints from a lot of different people in town, either on different boards or committees or just community members. So I learned a lot of things about, say, conservation in town. There were a few people who were really interested in a lot of the Green initiatives and some of those things. So it was a great learning process for me, and I think the group as a whole worked really well together. And the plan has, similar to the school's strategic plan, it has measurable performance objectives, action, you know, items. Some of the original things we saw in the proposal from the company that we work with, some of the plans they'd done in other towns didn't have action items. They had more general goals, but we were really insistent that we wanted specific objectives with action items, and this will have that. So I think for the town, it's good that there are very specific things that will need to be done now.
So did they end up talking at all about, like, are they going to do, excuse me, like a progress monitoring piece, like we're doing with any kind of outside group?
Not with the outside group. The outside group is still going to meet with the town manager. They've got some tools, templates and things, but they're not going to stay on for that process. It's going to be the town manager and his staff will be responsible. But there is a recommended schedule for different stakeholders on how often they would meet, present to the select board, things like that, so that there is a schedule to kind of keep them on a timeline. But no assistance from the consulting group at that, at that point.
Susan, I think that, I felt like I I was part of it because of your reporting and what you, how you handled it. So I really, really want to thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
You should.
No, I think it was a good thing for the town, because there was nothing to pull all the different town staff members and committees together with one umbrella. Because there are a lot of master plans and implementation plans on all different departments throughout the town, but nothing's been there to pull them together, and this hopefully will help that be accomplished. All right, then I had Harrington meeting last week. All of these PTOs are busy in a really great way, so they have a lot of events coming up. There's a Dine to Donate night coming up on May 19th at the Establishment. There are a lot of great things going on with their fourth-grade committee for the end of the year. There's going to be a Read-a-thon coming up, and Harrington School is choosing to change, tweak it a little bit to emphasize the reading part of it. It is a fundraiser. Kids will be asked to do pledges, but there's now an opportunity for kids to be entered into raffles for prizes simply by participation. They really want to emphasize the reading, not the money part of it. It's still a fundraiser, but this way, kids who can't get as many pledges still have the motivation to participate and read, because they know they can win some of the prizes without having to bring money in. And I think that's just a nice focus to encourage the reading part of it. Harrington Schools' calendar raffle fundraiser is ongoing. There's a, someone drawn new to win prizes every single day, the month of April. They raised $10,020 through that calendar raffle, so that's great. And they are ready to have a slate of officers for next year. They're working on filling. They need a teacher appreciation coordinator. They need a secretary. They need a treasurer. So if anyone watching really wants to get involved in Harrington PTO, please step up. Last night, I went to the CHIPS PTO meeting. We heard from them tonight about a lot of the types of things they're doing. And as I said, their PTO and their teachers work together so well in kind of planning things out, even right down to spirit days. You know, the 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 PTO gets really involved in helping choose what days will be, different themes. They do a really wonderful job at that. One thing that was interesting that was reported about that, and Maria, you may end up reporting about this, that the Council of Chelmsford Schools, so all the PTOs participate by sending people to the Council of Chelmsford Schools meeting, are really, really pushing for better communication. They're really urging the PTOs to have better communication in two ways. One is that PTOs will communicate with each other for more efficiency. Sometimes they might be able to get better pricing. If three schools are doing a Roller Kingdom event, maybe they can get better pricing by booking them together. So they're really encouraging PTOs to communicate with each other. But they're also encouraging PTOs through their school newsletters to share a lot more about what it is that PTOs do and how they give back to the school, so that families can really hear about fundraising efforts and exactly what all that money is being spent on. So I, for CHIPS, for instance, Megan is going to start adding how the money from the PTO fundraisers helps the school into her regular newsletters and emails, just to get the word out better to people. So that's good news. That only helps everyone. All right, that's the major things.
Annie, you have anything?
Yeah, I have a few. Sorry. So I got to hear about South Row, Parker, and McCarthy over the past week or so. I heard at each, from each school, that the MCAS has gone well so far, so that is good news. And it sounds like there are comparatively low absence rates, which is, which is a good thing. A lot of them are talking about how few students needed to do makeups. At South Row in particular, where I met with them on the 7th, their multicultural fest was a big success, and I will not list everything they talked about that they've been doing. As Susan said, very busy times at these PTOs, lots of events. A couple of specific things to name. They are assembling a committee to plan what to do with that $20,000 windfall they got from that spokesperson who did box, box tops. And so they are trying to assemble a committee that represents, you know, a wide array of members of the community to make a decision about something that will meet the school's needs, but be, you know, interesting and creative use for those funds. Let's see, so that was the big thing at South Row. At McCarthy, they are in the middle of planning grade-six move-ups and also special activities for their eighth graders, so sort of looking at both sides of the school in that sense. Another interesting thing is they are bringing a book fair to McCarthy for the first time in a while. There was some uncertainty about how popular it would be, but they felt like they really wanted to encourage the reading and get students in, so they're trying it out. At Parker, they talked about how well the STEM fair went. It was the first one in a while at Parker, and it was very popular. They anticipate even more interest next year. As someone who was there, it was jam-packed, and there were great projects, really a wide diversity of project ideas. So very exciting. It's the start of the fourth term, and as we heard earlier, high schoolers have started their internships, and there are 18 CHS students interning at Parker. And that is going well. Students seem to really like having teens supporting them and being part of their school. There is a spring Panorama SEL survey happening Thursday, and, or maybe it was last Thursday, some point recently. And there's going to be new grade-level socials coming up. And then the big thing at Parker that they're trying to do is this big fest called We Are Parker on the 11th of June. It's going to involve food trucks representing kind of the culinary interests of different cultures and communities that go to Parker. There's going to be a cabaret. There's going to be outdoor games, and the idea is to get as many of the community together outdoors when the weather is nice.
That's wonderful. So for me, the update from Center, the next big event is jointly done with McCarthy. The signs are up. It's May 3rd, and that's Recycle Junk Day, quote-unquote. And it's become really, more than anything, a community event, so, May 3rd. They're looking for a couple of people to help, still volunteers, so they're, they asked for that. The way Center does it, they don't meet every single month, so this is just a short update. For the high school, they have their big event coming up, which will be the after prom. And usually, around a couple hundred students participate with their guests. And this, I believe they've now decided, they've made a decision that they're going to do their big tournament fundraiser at the beginning of the year, instead of running it for this year to support the after prom this year. So beginning of next year, they'll have that pickleball tournament coming up, okay? So we can all look for that. Our Council of Schools gave us an update, but the update is basically about how many attendees there were, and of parents. In the evening, it was like 15 parents attended. They gave a couple of items, but we'll share this with you at the next meeting, because we need to kind of digest a couple of things that were said here, okay?
Yep.
Good. All right. I intended to go to the finance committee meeting with the superintendent the other day, but I was not able to attend. But I did watch him on TV, did a very nice job presenting the budget to the finance committee, and they were very open to.
It's always a good group, yeah. So we go, this is a matter of kind of presenting our overall budget, talk a little bit about some of the cost drivers and things like that, like the town does. Ultimately, the school committee has the line of autonomy and authority over the budget. But we go to town meeting, you know, they always ask for recommendation from the select board, the FinCom, and the school committee. So it's a good relationship we have with them.
Yep. And then we had our school building committee meeting a few weeks ago. We officially approved Leftfield, I believe.
Leftfield.
Leftfield is our project manager, so we're going to be meeting with them again next week, and they're going to do a little presentation of the kind of work they're going to do in terms of helping us hire a designer and beginning to get the word out to the community and, you know, really starting to get going on the project, so.
Yeah, the the next Thursday's meeting is actually going to be a big one. So even if you're, I know Dennis is a liaison to the group, but if you have a chance to watch the meeting, Leftfield is going to walk us through kind of their whole approach to managing this project, timelines, who's involved, designer selection. I'm going to guess it's going to be about an hour and 15 minutes to an hour and a half. It is going to be televised or taped, so you can go and watch it. It's a week from Thursday.
So it's in the middle of vacation?
Yeah, it's in the middle of vacation week.
Six o'clock.
Uh, well, I may need someone to.
24th at six.
But it's going to be taped, so even just in your downtime, it's going to be just a very informative meeting to, I think, introduce you to the Leftfield team, again, like their approach. to, I think, uh introduce you to the Leftfield team, again, like their approach, how we're gonna um go through our projects. So that'll be a big one.
Yeah.
Looking forward to that, so.
Yes, having just come out of um the the elections, I think that the sense I got was that the town truly does want, a lot of people in the town do want to see a new building, um which I felt really good about hearing that. They know, they understand and they see the need for it and what it brings to the town.
Let's hope they keep keep that.
That's what I, that was my sense.
Absolutely. All right, um anyone have any new items? I just want to go over. So our next meeting is the twenty ninth. The day before is the first meeting of night of town meeting.
Right.
So we that's usually we go there as a group because we're gonna present the budget and the capital budget, all that. So that will be the the Monday at seven thirty, right, seven thirty, town meeting. And then our meeting would be Tuesday, the twenty ninth, um with superintendent's gonna schedule a fairly light meeting so we can have an executive session towards the end of that and talk about some things that we need to talk about.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about town meeting? Do we have an agenda yet for when the topics will be discussed that directly connect to the school committee?
Be the warrant.
It's the warrant, so basically, we're usually first night.
Beginning.
So we should basically be that that Monday night. That will be the budget. That will be the capital plan, all those items. There's a couple of other uh warrant articles that I'm kind of watching that aren't like directly related to schools, but I think that are gonna be later on. Like there is an article that talks about um lighting in town. And um I don't, again, I'm trying to follow it and get caught up on it now, but I just don't know how like um school facility lighting would be impacted and things like that, like our fields and stuff. So I'm I'm just kind of perusing the warrant article to see what's not specifically, yes, like all of our items, direct items are the first night and typically it happens early on. That first night under the reports of the the committees, um Pat Maloney, who's the chair of the school building committee, will provide a little update on the school building project. So most of our stuff is really that first night, but I just want to look and kind of gauge to see when other items that might touch on schools um would be coming up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody have anything else? All right, I don't see any emails or any other comments, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye, was zero. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.